Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November 7th, 2016, special meeting to order for the York County School Board. We have some action items, some presentations, and some updates for us this evening. We're going to get right into it with Dr. Shandor. I'm going to let you start, give a few words on our action items this evening.
Thank you, Dr. George, Board members. I'm going to ask Dr. James just to share some brief information related to our one action item this evening. Dr. James?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Dr. George, members of the board, we have before you this evening an action item to declare the trailer at Waller Mill Elementary School as surplus property. And the good news is, this trailer is going to be used by the York Park Coast and Sheriff's Office for a training center. But we need the board to declare it as surplus property so we can move this trailer from Waller Mill, which is good news because all the students now will be inside of the building and for it to be used as a training center for the York Park Coast and Sheriff's Office.
Any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward.
Straightforward.
Very to the point. Good job, Dr. Shandor.
It's his birthday.
By the way, happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday!
No, that just means happy birthday. Thank you for reminding me.
Thank you for celebrating with us. I'm sure.
Okay. I need a motion and a second, please.
I move that the trailer at Waller Mill be declared surplus so it can be given to the York County Sheriff's Department.
I second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mrs. Kurski and seconded by Mr. Mathis to approve the motion. Mrs. Kurski?
Yes.
Mr. Mathis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our presentations at this time. Dr. Shandor, can you take it?
Yes, thank you, Dr. George. I'm going to ask Dr. Tony Vladu, Director of Secondary Instruction, to please come to the podium. He's going to provide an update or strategic plan related to an objective under Goal One as it pertains to the percentage of advanced diploma graduates achieving the college and career standard on the SAT. Dr. Vladu.
Good evening, Chairman George, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, I'll provide you with an update on our strategic goal related to college and career readiness. Goal One of the strategic plan states that York County School Division students will consistently demonstrate growth and excellence in the skills and knowledge needed to be productive citizens. One objective under Goal One states that by FY '17, the number of advanced studies diploma graduates achieving the college and career standard on the SATs will increase four percentage points over and above the percentage earned in 2012. Before we begin to review our progress, I would like to take a moment to go over this graph. The blue bars represent annual targets while the green bars represent performance. Performance on this goal is measured by the percentage of students that earn the advanced studies diploma and a combined score of 1550 on the SAT for critical reading, mathematics, and writing sections. The 1550 score was selected because this level of performance indicates a 65% likelihood of achieving a B or higher average during the first year in college. As we look at this level of performance, I want to provide some context. This year, 650 advanced diploma graduates took 574 SAT tests. Out of the tests taken, all but 15, or 97% of tests were using the old testing format. Therefore, this data does not reflect performance on the revised SAT test. Later in this presentation, I'll review the changes to the redesigned SAT test. Now, I want to draw your attention to the SAT performance of our students on the advanced diploma. As you can see, 58% of graduating seniors on the advanced diploma earned a combined score equal or greater than 1550. While this level of performance represents a decrease of three percentage points over the previous year and a 1% difference from meeting this year's target, the next few slides will provide a better profile of our students' SAT achievement. This chart represents a three-year trend in reading, writing, and math, not only for students earning the advanced diploma, but for all students. As you can see, all student performance on these three sections of the SATs have consistently improved over the past three years. What you don't see in this data is the performance of our subgroups. While we have not reported subgroup data in the past, tonight, I'm proud to report that since 2012, black student performance on the SATs has increased from an average score of 1355 to 1431 points, representing an increase of 76 points. Equally important is that all of our students continue to do better on the SATs since we began tracking progress on this goal. Although this is not an objective, I want to take a moment to compare the National, State, and Division SAT average performance for public school students. As you can see by the green bars, York County School Division students consistently outperform both state and national averages in reading, writing, and math. I also want to take a moment to share another measure that speaks to the college readiness of York County School Division students. Last year's seniors took 275 ACT tests. Like the SATs, the ACT is also accepted by all colleges for admission. Scores of 18 or higher in English, and 22 or higher in math and reading, and 23 or higher in science predict a 50% or higher likelihood of earning a B or higher, or a 75% likelihood of earning a C or higher in the corresponding course during the first year in college. Our results this past school year show that York County School Division graduates are notably better prepared to be successful during the first year in college. The redesigned SAT test took effect this past March. As we look at this year's graduating class, we expect the majority of these students to take the redesigned SAT test. There are many changes to the redesigned test, and I want to take a few moments to summarize these changes for our view of public. First, the essay portion is optional on the redesigned test, as many colleges do not require these scores for admission. Second, this new test is out of 1,600 points while the old test was out of 2,400 points to reflect the optional essay. If students do choose to take the essay, this portion will be reported separately. Third, as you may remember, the old format included a deduction for incorrect answers. The new format uses a write-only scoring, which does not penalize students for guessing. Fourth, the redesigned SAT is also shorter in duration. While under the old testing format, students are allowed at 3 hours and 45 minutes, the new test takes 3 hours to complete without the optional essay. If students do choose to take the optional essay, this will add another 45 minutes to the test. Fifth, there's also an updated college readiness standard of 10-10, or 1,010 points out of 1,600 points under the new test. This level of performance predicts a 75% likelihood of earning at least a C during the first semester in a college-related course. Lastly, the redesigned test also includes test subscores for every test section, providing additional insight into students, parents, college admission officers, and counselors. As our students will be taking the redesigned test, it is also to remember that due to these changes, as well as the new college and career benchmark, moving forward, it will be difficult to compare student performance between the old and the new testing format. As I conclude this presentation, I want to take a few moments to review our next steps. Last year, you had approved the funding for all 10th graders to take the preliminary SATs, also known as the PSATs. Your support of this program will result in additional preparation time for our students and has a great chance of improving the college and career readiness for all of our students. York County School Division students took the PSAT test this past Wednesday. Once results arrived later in January, students will have the opportunity to link the college board accounts to Khan Academy. In doing so, students will receive individualized mini lessons that are tailored to their areas of weakness, which will better prepare them for the SATs. To support our school's professional development was provided to all high school principals this past year at the Leadership Academy in July. Additionally, counselors received training late in August. We're also in the planning stages for additional professional development for our assessment and compliance coordinators, and we aim to have this training ready for them later in January. Lastly, our principals of schools have set goals in order to increase the number of linked accounts. We're confident that as we monitor in progress on this goal, a greater number of students will receive more specific feedback on the PSAT performance and even more specific assistance to do well on the SAT test. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the work of our students, teachers, and their families. This concludes my presentation. At this time, I welcome your questions and comments.
I wanted to just to comment because my question was a PSAT, but you answered that quite well before I had time to ask it. But I liked the fact that where it's being connected, where it's all coming together, it's not just a fragment out there that we're paying for the success of how they do well or we hope to prepare them. Y'all have figured out a way to give support, connect them to the next path, to their SAT, and to make it meaningful, I guess. We're going to get more bang for the buck paying for those tests, obviously, by what's been designed. So hats off to y'all.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Looking forward just to see how students continue to do on this redesigned SAT.
Question. Maybe for you, maybe more for Dr. Guy. In the schools, I know they have individual SAT prep classes as you're getting closer to that. Is that division-wide or is that an individual thing per high school?
It's a course in the Program of Studies, and so it's dependent on whether that course makes. And then schools, different schools have different programs that are available after school, but it's not a division-wide requirement that they have those programs. There's also a lot of programs in the community as well that guidance, school counselors can share with students that are available to them. I think a big help will be the piece that Dr. Vladu just shared with regard to the PSAT and the Khan Academy because that is specific and individualized to the student in terms of where they struggled on the PSAT.
And the counselors will help them get connected with this, I'm sure.
Absolutely. Dr. Vladu's done a lot of work with both principals, or sharing with principals, and the big goal is for them to increase the linked accounts.
And is that all the Khan Academy, that's all online type stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like the SATs are going back to closer to where they used to be with the 1,802 reading, math, and the essay as optional type of thing. I find it interesting they're changing the standard of what that score means from, you know, the 65% chance of B minus B average to a 75% chance C. Just a comment, I'm not expecting. Why? Why did the board do that?
They've done a number of comparator tables.
So probably, in all likelihood, what they've done is looked at the performance on just the reading and the math portion previously. But they've, for those who want to look at it, there's a lot of comparator tables that they've created.
Oh, I bet.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
Okay, for our next strategic plan update, Dr. Shandor, would you like to introduce our?
Yes, thank you. Yes, Ms. Candy Skinner is now going to come to the podium, Director of Elementary Instruction. She's going to provide an update on our magnet programs, which is an objective under Goal Two. This presentation is going to highlight school events and learning opportunities in each of our magnet programs during the FY '16 academic school year. Ms. Skinner?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman George, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, I have the pleasure of providing you with an update on Goal Two of the strategic plan. This goal focuses on providing engaging, rigorous opportunities for student learning through multiple magnet programs. As part of this update, I will share some of the many learning opportunities our magnet schools provide to our students. Before I begin my presentation, I'd like to recognize our magnet school principals and leadership staff members that are here with us tonight. These staff members, along with our teachers, support the work that our teachers do through our magnet programs and provide that high-quality instruction for our students. So we appreciate them joining us this evening. I'll begin my presentation tonight by highlighting Waller Mill, York County's elementary fine arts magnet school. This past spring, 5th grade students at Waller Mill were invited for a family night with Norfolk-based scrap artist Sam Hunley. Students viewed his recent exhibit at the Peninsula Fine Arts Center and were immediately fascinated with his work in creating masterpieces from discarded materials that some would consider trash. After Mr. Hunley shared about his craft, students and parents worked together to create their own piece of scrap art from recycled treasures to display for the school. Afterwards, students worked collaboratively with their art teacher, Mrs. Coob, to create one large piece, a star. This was later presented to the school as a 5th grade gift. The annual Calvicated Stars showcases the talent of Waller Mill's 3rd-5 students. As part of this program, students worked together to create a show for the students, staff, and families to enjoy. As in a traditional variety show, there is music, dance, instrumentals, jokes, and more. Students are able to participate in whatever way they choose, whether on the stage or behind the scenes, helping with set construction, stage management, and lighting and sound work. Waller Mill just held its Calvicated Stars program just two weeks ago, and it was a huge success, according to Mrs. Goodwin. Now, I'd like to share a little bit about Yorktown Elementary, our math, science, and technology magnet school. Yorktown's biggest magnet event of the year is the Math, Science, and Technology Family Night, which is hosted in April. Multiple community organizations join school staff to promote engaging activities for families that focus on math, science, and technology. During last year's event, visitors got to try their talents. A student created mini golf courses that were made during math and science resource classes. I got to participate in that as well, and those were pretty tough. They made those challenging. In another room, kindergartners shared the products of their STEM Design Challenge, which they used gumdrops and toothpicks to build a structurally sound house that could keep out the big bad wolf. Other activities included a star lab where families could learn about the constellations, viewing artifacts from the Virginia Living Museum, and playing math games focused on family problem solving. Each year, students at Yorktown Elementary participate in state and national activities to enhance math, science, and technology instruction. Last December, all students from kindergarten to 5th grade participated in the National Hour of Code during their science resource class. Students used coding languages to move characters in Star Wars and Minecraft animations across the digital game board. Learning to code reinforces both math and technology skills from computation to growth. Now, we will turn our attention over to our middle and our high school arts magnet programs, beginning with Queens Lake Middle School Arts Magnet, which we call MCM. This past spring, in conjunction with the School of the Arts High School Musical, the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee, MCM held its very own spelling bee. MCM students also put in a second annual guest appearance at the Waller Mill Character Parade. And finally, students took a field trip to William &amp; Mary's Muscarelli Art Museum, where students got to view the exhibits and then select a painting or other piece of art to interpret with words and with movement in their literacy arts, dance, and theater classes. Each year, MCM students collaborate and perform with the SOA Dance Art Classes. Tonight, I'll share two collaborative events from last year. All 60 MCM students, as well as 40 to 60 SOA high school students, performed multiple dances in the SOA Dance Arts Jubilee, which annually plays to a sold-out house at the Bruton High School Auditorium. MCM students performed with high school SOA students during the Rhythm Ensemble, the Cocophony Collective, under the direction of SOA literacy arts teacher Renee Kingen. In addition, MCM students also had weekly music instruction with professional singer and actress Mrs. Melissa Cartwright, culminating in live performances for the MCM Winter Open House and Spring Showcase. Bruton High School is the home of York County's School of the Arts Magnet, which we call SOA. This year, SOA students had the opportunity to enjoy numerous guests, the World Fiddle Ensemble, the New England Conservatory Brass Quartet, and Dr. David Spangler, children author and illustrator. Master classes were also offered by the Paul Taylor Dance Group and other professional choreographers through the Russell Athletic Bowl performance. SOA students excelled in many ways during the 2015-16 school year. SOA Technical Theater students placed first in the Tech Olympics held at the Virginia Theater Association Conference, which we call the VTA. SOA's play Night Mother received honorable mention at the VTA One Act Play Competition, and SOA theater arts teacher Carrie De Forre received a director's directing award for her work. This past year, SOA students produced many stage productions, including a musical, a dance jubilee, a student talent show, a swing dance with a live band, a senior recital and recognition ceremony, and two MCM showcases. We're very proud of their accomplishments. The York County International Baccalaureate, or IB, Diploma Program is located on our York High School campus. IB students at York High strive to develop the attributes of the learner profile and become enquirers and thinkers who are caring and balanced. Their goal is to become responsible members of their local and global communities. During the 15-16 school year, IB students studied the impact of pollution on our environment for their interdisciplinary project. They grappled with intellectual dilemmas during World Philosophy Day, but also took time to help their school by repainting the numbers on the parking lot. IB French students boldly dined on escargot, and some of the students had the opportunity to learn self-defense from York High IB alumnus. York High School DP students performed consistently well on IB examinations. Students scored higher than their global average in five subjects, which included English Language and Literature, Geography, History of the Americas, Biology, and Math Studies. IB diploma graduates continued to garner extensive academic recognition. Members of the class of 2016 were awarded over 1.8 million in scholarships. In addition, 100% of 2016 enrolled in a four-year college or university, choosing to attend top universities such as in Virginia or across the United States, including University of Virginia, Virginia Tech, the College of William &amp; Mary, Columbia, Temple, Duke, and the U.S. Air Force Academy. Quite impressive. So that concludes my presentation tonight, giving you a little bit of update of what's happening in our magnet programs, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
They enjoy the William &amp; Mary Museum visit?
I believe they did. I think it's a...
I highly encourage it. That was awesome that you guys set that up. That's giving an exposure at that age to quality museum. That's very good.
I think all of this is wonderful. I guess the only question I would have, and I don't want to put you on the spot so you don't have to answer it now, but in thinking as we get through the budget process, I mean, what are the needs of the magnet program? This is all wonderful, but I'm sure there's a long list of needs too, so that would be good for us to know as well.
There is. The teachers in our magnet schools are very, and our principals, were trying to connect our core curriculum to the arts, and so consistently providing them with opportunities to go out and learn about our various museums, those opportunities that exist in our community, and then coming back and giving them time to connect that to our standards of learning is really important for our teachers, and so just continuing to provide those opportunities is really important.
So provide the funding for those opportunities.
Yes, yes.
And to kind of go along with that, I was sitting here thinking, you know, we've had these magnet programs and have watched them grow and develop. I mean, we started them as babies and they just kind of grew and grew and in some cases When do we ever ask the question, what else is out there? What is something else that we could bring to the table that would be an offering of a magnet concept somewhere else in our school division that would help balance attendance sometimes, but also at the same time offer something that we haven't done? Something new, something different? So I throw that out because I'd love to hear what's out there and what might be the next gem that we can create because these other ones have become so spectacular, what they deliver for students, so...
And that's a good point because I'm not sure when these programs started, but we're in 2016. So looking ahead, what are some areas that our students need to be involved with now that could help them in their futures?
And I think our current strategic plan helps kind of guide that. Virginia Department of Education, the initiatives that they provide to us in our school divisions should help us in that process. I don't think, I'm at liberty to say what programs, but I do know that we continually look to see what we need to do to prepare our students for life after high school, and so these programs do give them exposure to different types of learning, which is important for the students' after-high-school aspirations. They have a wide variety of experiences to build from.
That's the new challenge, maybe, is...
It is.
That's a great question because, I mean, as we move through this evening, we're going to talk about our strategic plan and some of the timing of our draft plan for rolling that out in the spring, we've developed a plan to engage a lot of different stakeholders, staff members, business partners, many of our community members that can help shape some of those thoughts and ideas moving forward into our objective.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner. Appreciate it.
Great job.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Shandor, introduce our next...
I sure will. Next, I'm going to ask Dr. Karen Kang, who'll come up to the podium, Associate Director of K-12 Academic Services. She's going to share an update of an objective under Goal Three of the strategic plan. This presentation is going to highlight some of the professional development activities for instruction that were offered during the FY '16 school year and throughout the summer in preparation for FY '17. Turn it over to Dr. Kang.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman George, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, I will provide you with an update on professional development for licensed staff. Within this update, I will highlight some of the professional learning opportunities in the area of instruction that support the York County School Division's strategic High-quality professional development continues to be important to the York County School Division. In order to do this, efforts are made to have professional development opportunities that are job-embedded and purposeful. We use information such as standardized tests, site-based assessment, and classroom walkthrough data to identify specific needs for training. We also seek input on topics from teachers and administrators, as well as use those who have expertise in specific areas to provide training. For the most part, professional development focuses on three areas in order to support our school division's strategic plan. These are K-12 literacy, learning for all, and building capacity in our teachers and administrators. Tonight, I will summarize various trainings that have been provided to our staff in these areas. For each building, we have two teachers who serve as instructional trainers. We provide these individuals with specific professional development, and they in turn provide training to the teachers and their schools. Last year, our elementary instructional trainers focused on Writer's Workshop, while professional development for secondary instructional trainers emphasized strategic reading. In addition to this training, we also offered 72 hours of optional training on Writer's Workshop this summer. We're excited to share that 185 teachers and administrators participated in this optional four-day training. Approximately 75% of all middle school English teachers also attended an optional four-day middle school literacy academy this summer. One teacher shared, "This is by far the best professional development I've ever attended." Not only did we receive high-quality training, but we also were provided all the materials and resources we need in order to be successful at what we are trained to do. Also, our elementary reading specialists collaborated and engaged in research to create literacy learning modules that teachers can access via our internet. And other academic areas were provided to support learning for our students. A cohort of 15 secondary science teachers participated in the Project-Based Environmental Literacy Program. The six days of training focused on creating meaningful watershed educational experiences for our students. In September of last year, 55 teachers in grades 6 through 12 practiced using Pro-Wear to design and implement investigations. Throughout the school year, 4th and 5th grade science teachers participated in training on the 5E instructional model and utilizing leveled readers, hands-on material kits, and online resources. We continued professional development in the area of project-based learning with a three-day intensive training led by York County School Division Capacity Builders. Fifty-nine teachers... Fifty-nine teachers created and refined project-based learning projects to be implemented during the year. Now, I would like to share some of the professional development we have provided to support our students with a variety of learning needs. Training was provided on programs designed to close the achievement gap, as well as those that extend learning. Last year was the second year of training in the area of tiered system of supports. Schools were invited to bring teacher teams who participated in the training and then provided professional development onsite. Specific schools that did not meet AMO targets were also coached by the directors and curriculum coordinators during this process. We continued training in the research-based intensive reading intervention, Level Literacy Intervention, and Wilson Just Words, as well as math intervention programs, V-Math, Trans-Math, and Inside Algebra. LEP tutors, peer educators, and teachers continued to receive professional development and comprehension instruction, building vocabulary, and developing written and oral language skills for our English language learners. Professional development also included enrichment in the classroom. The gifted cluster teachers at the elementary level participated in training on junior-grade books and the shared inquiry process. During this training, teachers learned how to utilize junior-grade books within their literacy instruction. During the Middle School Literacy Academy, teachers received training on literature and thought, which demonstrated how to use selected texts to engage students in the shared inquiry process. A half-day optional professional development on number talks was offered to K-2 teachers. This program provides opportunities for primary students to share and extend their thinking and allow them to make sense of numbers. Thirty-two teachers and 15 administrators attended this training. One of our leadership ideals is to build capacity in our fellow YCSD staff. This summer, we found opportunities to do this. Leadership Academy focused on the area of professional learning communities and highlighted some of the successful programs happening in our schools. Day one included our assessment and compliance coordinators and teacher leaders, and day two included tabletop discussions led by principals, assistant principals, and central office personnel. On August 25th, York County School Division licensed personnel attended our professional learning conference, which included 92 sessions. Fifty-nine of those sessions were led by classroom teachers, educational technology facilitators, library media specialists, school psychologists, tech support personnel, and members of the school board office. York County recognizes the importance of supporting new teachers and administrators. We welcomed 73 new teachers into the school division during new teacher orientation in August. They received training in a variety of areas, including educational technology, special education, and curriculum and instruction. These new teachers will receive support from mentors throughout the school year. Some of our best teachers were selected to participate in mentor training through a program developed by the College of William &amp; Mary. The school division also provides ongoing support for new special education teachers in areas such as individualized education plans, behavior intervention plans, co-teaching, and data collection. Our new assistant principals also attended this training. During the 2015-16 school year, three of our principals earned their National Principal Mentorship Certification through the National Association of Elementary School Principals. The mentoring skills developed through this training provided a strong foundation for assisting new principals last year. Thank you for allowing me to share the work we are doing in the area of professional development. At this time, we would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have one question. You talked about optional professional development, or many teachers took advantage of. What was the out-of-pocket expense for those? Did the teacher have to pay for that?
No.
I just wondered about that when you said it was optional.
It was just a time commitment, and we were very impressed with the dedication of our teachers. When you think about the large number of teachers that participated in four full days of training during the summer, and they chose to do that, and the same with Leadership, the Middle School Literacy Academy, that was four full days of training in August, and 75% of our middle-school English teachers participated in that. So it was, and the same with math talks. Math talks was one day, but it was in the summer again. So that's awesome.
Another thing I'd just like to add, I know that this is, I can't speak for everyone, but we've always been concerned with the cuts we've made and what impact it's had in the professional development area. So we're always asking that question, at least some of us, of what have we cut? What have we gotten rid of? Are we giving enough? Are we putting enough in there? So happy you did this presentation. I mean, this was well put together, because now it gives me that feeling of, oh goodness, okay, we've got it covered. We're doing well. Obviously, we probably could put some more resources into this and to do more, but knowing that it's shored up and it's there and it's happening, it's real, and the teachers, it's available, and we're doing what we can to create that momentum of excitement so that you can move it into the classroom with the students is great. So you bade my evening with this, so thank you.
And Mr. Medford, I'd like to just share with the group that it is really through the DODIA, one of the DODIA grants that we have, that we've been able to provide so much of this training. The summer training that we've provided, a lot of the training that we've provided with Writer's Workshop, has all been funded through the DODIA literacy grant that we received. We've also had a grant that we got for many of the science, the programs, the environmental literacy piece, the special education through another grant. So we have really supported our professional development program through actively seeking out grants and using that money to provide training we would not otherwise be able to provide with the funds that we have in the professional development account.
How long does that...
The literacy is a five-year grant. The special education grant is a three-year grant, and I believe we're in year two of the special education grant.
Would it be appropriate to, all right, wonderful that grants are available, if tomorrow, yesterday we write the grants, we get the monies, but if tomorrow the grants went away, what would we have to budget to keep these programs, this kind of PD going? It'd be just a curiosity question more than anything.
Well, and I'd have to pull the data for the grants, but I would say it's a significant amount of funds, more than we ever had in our professional development account, is how much we've gotten in those grants. But we could provide it through Friday notes.
And lastly, the mentoring program that you have for new teachers, that's wonderful, that's still going on. Does that mentoring continue throughout the probationary period?
New teachers to the profession receive a one-to-one mentor through their first year, and then teachers that are experienced teachers that come into our school division get a lead mentor that's in a building that provides mentorship to them.
So oftentimes, new teachers to the profession, fresh out of college, oftentimes some of the situations they face, it's how do I get through this? So that's good to see.
I have one question. It was my understanding that you were going to have family engagement, professional development this past summer. Did that come to be, or was that with the committee, or who took part in that?
The next presentation.
Oh, super.
We're going to answer that in the next presentation.
Thank you.
Huge question, just for me, and you don't have to go into detail, just what is V-Math and Trans-Math? I know that Mount Vernon, they were teaching a different way to get the same numbers with the tens and ones in different ways.
V-Math is at the middle-school level, and Trans-Math is as well. And V-Math is for those students struggling on grade-level math. And then the Trans-Math supports those students who are two or more years behind in the math. And is that the middle-school level?
Okay, so they're remedial type of programs, okay. You also mentioned 73 new teachers. Curious, how many of those were first-time hires for them?
I will have to get back...
Jim, do you know?
I've got that. It's about 20.
About 20? Okay. Thank you. And while you're, that's not a question for you, but Dr. Guy, I guess, and follow back up to the money piece, I think as we progress through our budget processes for FY18, I think it'd be a positive to show the community and tell the folks, the taxpayers, that these dollars would have to come from somewhere if we did not receive these fundings from grants and different things that we apply for. So that number, I think, if it's significant, I think it'd be a plus to have that as a talking point.
Use it as a starting point, you know?
Well, this is what we would have to pay for. We need to go out and find a federal or a state grant, so private grants, by fact.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Dr. Shandor, would you like to talk about our next, a little bit more on professional development?
Yes, yes. So annually updates to the strategic plan are presented to reflect the activities and programs that have occurred in the school division. The operational updates for the professional development goal and partnership and relationships goal will be presented this evening by Dr. Catherine Jones, the Director of School Administration. Dr. Jones?
Good evening, Dr. George, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. This evening, I will update you on Goals Three and Four of the strategic plan. Under Goal Three, professional development, the objective is to participate annually in a high-quality professional development program that supports the goals of the strategic plan. In operations, the professional development activities are implemented in three ways: division-wide, virtually, and through multi-agency presentations. Division-wide, there was training for a variety of staff. The new teacher and substitute teacher training included topics such as benefits and payroll, classroom management, workplace harassment, division policies and procedures, information technology, and child abuse and neglect reporting. School-based clerical training included enrollment, the 800 megahertz radio, and records management. Bus drivers and bus assistants received training in the reporting of traffic accidents, safe management of disruptive behavior on the bus, security of buses, bus evacuation drills, and distracted driving and human error. The custodians received training on policy updates, safety, and understanding tax on uniforms. The nurses received training in CPR, concussions, Aspen, insulin, glucagon administration, and mental health. And lastly, administrators received professional development in the Operations Leadership Institute. The Operations Leadership Institute was for one and a half days. Topics included school law updates, mandatory reporting of abuse and neglect, the military child, gang awareness, family engagement, attendance, attendance contracts, customer service, crisis management, and bullying prevention. We also use virtual training through Safe Schools. This training was in cyberbullying, bullying recognition and response, diabetes awareness, sexual misconduct, and blood-borne pathogen exposure prevention. We require all division employees to complete the online training each year. Lastly, professional development is delivered through a multi-agency approach. We continue to have fire and life safety, law enforcement, and our assistant county attorney to partner with us. We have added the training provided by Social Services of mandated reporting, child welfare, human trafficking, and parental capacity. There is also training offered through the military liaisons on the military child. Now, this concludes the updates for Goals Three. Are there any questions from this section? Under Goal Four, partnerships and relationships, the objective is that staff will continue to implement and refine strategies annually to promote positive relationships among students. Schools continue to implement bullying prevention strategies, character development activities, and peer mediation throughout the school year. An example of what our schools have in place is at Queens Lake Middle School. The school is a green-zone school. Green zone outlines three categories or zones of behavior: green, yellow, and red, ranging from acceptable to unacceptable, and encourages individuals of all ages to stay in the green zone. The zones provide an easy avenue for identifying and discouraging yellow and red zone behaviors and promote kindness and civility overall. Now, Queens Lake has a green flag flying out front as a reminder to students and staff that it is a green-zone school. Also at Queens Lake Middle School, and at the majority of our elementary schools, the school counseling department organizes Red Ribbon Week, activities during the last week in October. Now, these activities during Red Ribbon Week are focused on building strong students who not only will say no to drugs, but also will stand up to bullying. During Red Ribbon Week, there are morning announcements, activities during lunch, and specific lessons and classes that are all directed at bullying prevention and character development. Another example is at Yorktown Middle School. Involvement is stressed. Students are advised to be responsible, be respectful, be safe, and be kind. Get involved, become a Falcon fanatic. These are only a few examples of the great things that are happening in our schools. Each year in October, I provide a list of bullying prevention and character development activities that are implemented throughout the year. The next objective under Goal Four is to strengthen school-family relationships, including welcoming school environments and effective two-way communications with families. Schools and departments will provide data to measure the facilitation of strong family-school Last year at this time, I reported that we were partnering with the York La Cosa Department of Social Services to implement a school-support family preservation program in Bethel Manor Elementary School to provide prevention and intervention services that support children's growth and development, strengthen families, and promote school success through home, school, and community collaboration. This year, I am pleased to report that the program will expand to Yorktown Elementary School and to McGruder Elementary School. Last year, I reported that the Family Engagement Committee was reinstated. The committee is continuing to research, review, and implement strategies that will actively involve more families in the education of their children. This year, we will have at least five administrators and counselors attending the Family Engagement Conference in March that will be held in Richmond. A community resource pamphlet was developed through the Family Engagement Committee. It lists community agencies, the services that they provide, and the point of contact. This has become a useful tool for families in transition. Also, through the Family Engagement Committee, one of our community groups donated homemade quilts to our needy families. The organization this year will sell the quilts and use the funds to assist families with school supplies and other needs. Transitioning, as you know, can be difficult for some of our military-connected students. To that end, the military liaisons have partnered with us to provide training to counselors, teachers, and administrators through free conferences. We have had great representation in the August and the October conferences. Another example of partnership is with the volunteers in our school's program. The numbers have declined, as you can see in the chart. We are reviewing the process to capture the volunteer hours. We want to be a little more consistent in the way that we are doing this, our collection of data. And lastly, we continue to connect with parents via social media. On Facebook and Twitter, parents receive updates of closures, delays, and incidents. This concludes the updates for Goal Four, partnerships and relationships. Are there any questions?
The professional development that you had with family engagement this summer, that involved Dr. Christine Constantina, is that right?
It did not involve him.
It did not? Okay, so that did not work out. Okay, that's what I was talking about earlier, that I thought you had some participate with him.
We had some folks attend the, was that in the spring when they attended?
Last month, yes.
You, Carl, others?
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember.
There were administrators. I attended, and we had an administrator from our drafted middle school to attend that as well. And I had my... And I had my attendants coordinated to attend together. And during the presentation from the Leadership Institute, we talked about some of the things that we had been trained in at that March conference with Dr. Constantina.
What has your support level been from principals as far as family engagement? One thing that I didn't see here, what I would like to see is there's no us versus them, school administration versus parents. And how do you create a more positive relationship in the schools?
I think that with the building-level representatives, they are developing and looking at strategies to get more and more families involved. We want it to be that it's us, not a they or them.
Right, that we're all together.
We're all in this together, yes, absolutely.
Yeah. York Pacosa Social Services, a family preservation program that's being expanded. Is that run by the county, or is it a collaborative effort between the school and the county? Are we just an avenue for them to be in touch with identified families? So, could you, don't need to go real deep into it, but could you tell me how that's ran a little bit?
It's a joint effort.
Okay.
Where Social Services will give us a few counselors to come into the building certain times during the day to talk with parents. If parents can come in, there are some issues, some concerns that they have. It could be a school issue, it could be a family issue, it could be some other things. But we are there, available to them as they would want.
Okay, so it's cooperative between us and the county?
It's cooperative, yes.
Services to reach out.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that the committee's back together, because that's where the rubber hits the road, I guess, and ideas and thoughts that come from the buildings and the leadership and the families and the parents and even students in some cases. More to come, I'm sure. I mean, because how you connected some of what's out there in our community that's can be pulled as a resource is wonderful. But I'm sure that as that committee continues to have discussions, is this going to be this growth? I think that's what we visualize this to become, anyway. So, looking forward to seeing what's around the corner.
And I want to commend Dr. Jones, too. She is a strong advocate for family engagement. So, I'm sure you're going to take this and run with it.
I agree. I'll hear more from her.
My two questions, with emphasis on cyberbullying and bullying, have we had any specific concerns or issues across the division that we need to give more emphasis to? Have there been situations of bullying? I guess we know we have the program in place to address it. Have we seen a decrease or no issue or?
When the concern comes to us, to the central office, I've talked with the administrator building level, and they have been taking care of the situation, and they've taken care of it immediately and resolved it. It has not gone any further than the building level.
And regarding the family engagement, we start off with Bethel Manor. Had success there, so now we're adding McGruder and Yorktown. What kind of end results do you anticipate or want to get, and then do you see building into other schools?
I'd like to see it at every elementary school.
Okay.
And I have my fingers crossed. So, we start off with the one that we have at every elementary school. Now, I'd like to have a service there even if we don't need it, you know, and that's a good thing, not to need it, but to have it.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Okay, we're going to leave Strategic Plan now and go to Proposed Capital Improvement Program. Dr. Shandor, would you like to?
Yep, thank you, Dr. George. Absolutely. So, Mr. Dennis Chair, our Chief Finance Officer, is now going to share some information pertaining to next year's proposed capital improvement plan. I'll turn it over to Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Dr. George, school board members, I want to, tonight, provide you, I guess you might say, a summary of the proposed capital improvement program. I would take you back to last month's work session. Dr. James and his staff presented to you their six-year Facilities Masters Plan, and that was a very detailed look at every project. And over the next six years, it also showed you all the shifts and projects and those kinds of things. Tonight, it's not my plan to go through that, although if you need, if you would like to discuss how further we can. What I would like to do is to take you through some summaries on the CIP first, and then we're going to move into some, I want to show you some debt service information that I think is important as we talk about how these projects get paid for. And then the last step is we'll go talk about what's next with the CIP. So, that's kind of what the game plan is. And so, I have a copy of the CIP in your place. And if you look at the very top line, you'll see that is the proposed CIP for fiscal years 18 through 23. Now, it's a six-year plan. So, the first year of the plan is the only year that technically gets appropriated by the Board of Supervisors. All of the other years are simply planning years. So, keep that in mind as we talk about this. The year that is most important in terms of funding would be FY18, as you remove through your budget process, as well as the Board of Supervisors. Now, there is a footnote here, and I think it's really important. So, I'm going to take a second to go review that with you. In FY17, the year we're in right now, this was the first year that you were given a bottom-line dollar amount for each year of the CIP, and it was up to the school board to determine how you wanted to allocate those dollars. So, what that meant was, it was the Board of Supervisors were not looking at individual projects any longer. They were just looking at the bottom-line amount that they were going to be allowing for you each year in the CIP, which was, I think, was a very positive change for us because we then were able to take the dollars we were allocated and determine what projects we wanted those to go to. It's our understanding that that process will continue, okay, for FY18. So, that's the goal that we have set forth in this capital improvements program. So, as we look, I want to take you back to last year as well and talk about our CIP that was proposed. And that's this middle area. And this is really just as a reminder, if you think back to last year's CIP, you had proposed a total for the six-year period of $89 million, approximately, $89 million. Now, that was based on what you had proposed the previous year as well, okay? Now, what was actually approved was a $67 million allocation. So, as, just as a reminder, last year, you had a real difficult job with the CIP. You had to effectively shift or eliminate $22 million with the projects in the CIP. You were able to do that. You did that at some cost because some of those projects got pushed out far enough to where they're not going to get done for a number of years. But you ended up with a $67 million CIP. So, we're really using that as we move into FY18 as our base, which is, if you look at the bottom section, you'll see how that compares to what was approved a year ago. So, the Board of Supervisors approved 67, excuse me, they approved $58 million for the period of time of 17 through 22. 23 is not included in this because last year, 23 was not on the table for discussion. Now, this year, the amount that's being put forth is of $58 million, okay? So, what that means is you have stayed within the requirements that you were given a year ago for each year of the CIP, with the exception of fiscal years 18 and 20. And if you look at those, they just shifted $6 million from fiscal year 18 over to fiscal year 20. So, that effectively is a very positive change from a financing standpoint because you've actually shifted a burden of $6 million further out in years. So, it gives everyone more time to plan for that. So, I think the good news in this is that the CIP is within the constraints in which you were given last year. So, it looks to me like it should be, you know, somewhat positively received because you're doing basically what you've been asked to do a year ago. So, that pretty much wraps up the summaries. I want to point out one thing to you, though, and if you look through the detail of the CIP, you're going to note there's one thing that's not in there, and that is the A and E services for the proposed new elementary school, okay? I believe that was in fiscal years 19 and 20, is that correct? I believe that was the point it was placed. Now, the plan for the A and E services is this. In discussions with the county administrator and other staff, the plan is, when those dollars are needed, the school board would request the Board of Supervisors to appropriate those funds either from the Impact Aid Reserve Fund or what we refer to as the Revenue Reserve Fund, which could be created very shortly. So, that would be the avenue. So, I want you to rest assured that even though the A and E services are not in the CIP, the avenue is open for you at the time that you feel like it's ready to move, you're ready to move forward with that A and E services, to request those funds from the Board of Supervisors. And they are, the county administrator is aware of this, county staff's aware of this, and I'm assuming the Board of Supervisors are as well.
In writing?
Excuse me?
In writing?
Well, there have been sufficient discussions about this, and there have been recent discussions about this as well. There is no written agreement. There is no written agreement. So, I would defer to Dr. Shandor, if he feels like he needs a written agreement.
Well, it wasn't only sufficient conversations, we've had significant conversations. Dr. George and I have also had conversations with Mr. Wosworth and Mr. Morgan related to this. So, I have a meeting with Mr. Morgan this Thursday as well, so we can finalize this and tighten this up a little bit more. And then we have a retreat on December 12th with that, that we can, if it's the wishes of this board, then we can certainly move to a grant.
I'm glad you answered that. That was my question for you tonight, actually. I think it would be a good idea to make sure that everyone is aware of this.
And if all was changed, this was still something that was discussed at this point in time, and we move forward.
Well, the bottom line is this, without that $2 million, that new school does not go forward. I mean, because that is needed. The amount that's programmed in the CIP is simply the construction cost, okay? So, it would definitely be needed, make no mistake about that.
And how long would it take to turn around? We knew a few weeks ago, when Dr. James made the report, that construction had stopped in a lot of the areas that we were anticipating, and that's why we moved it back. We don't know when that is going to pick up again. And if it picks up quickly, and even though we have the mobile units at both McGruder and Yorktown, you don't know how quickly that's going to be to capacity. So, if they decide, oh, we're not going to give you this this year, we're waiting, it's not saying they're not going to give it, but they're going to give it to us in a timely fashion to move forward.
Well, technically, the way the process would work would be, the school board would have to approve a resolution first, requesting them to appropriate the funds. Then, you could do that, let's say, in a given month, and then that next month, the Board of Supervisors could consider that. Now, the bigger time constraint in this is the RFP for the A and E services. That's what's going to take the time, and that's going to take several months. And then, once you have that awarded, then you're looking at another year before that A and E service is completed, you're ready to start construction on the school. So, there is a huge time lag from the point you even get the funding to go forward with this thing. But the funding could be done within probably a 60-day time period, assuming both boards were meeting in one month and the second month the Board of Supervisors was meeting as well.
So, what are you looking at as far as indicators to find out when we need to move forward with this?
Yeah, that's a real tough call because, right now, our enrollment is somewhat flat, although it has grown in the schools in which are impacted by this, by this, what the need for the new school is. And so, it's just going to be monitored. As those developments start taking action and they start moving on those, I mean, that's going to be a significant measure that we're going to look at to determine what, when we need to start building that school. You know, there's so many factors involved in this thing, but one thing we don't want to do is, we don't want to build a new school before we need it.
Right.
And so, timing is really sensitive in this because the operating costs alone are a million and a half dollars, and we don't, per year. So, we want to make sure when we get a new school out there that we've got enough students to put in to justify the new school. And that's really the challenge that all of us are up against, is when is that timing? When is it going to work for us? And Dr. James and his staff, they work with the Planning Office routinely. They're following these projects to kind of get a good sense of when they're going to come online so that we can, because there is a, there's a two-year, you know, window for this thing, possibly, potentially, a three-year window before you open the door in that new school for students to come in. So, it's definitely a concern and something that we're monitoring.
Dennis, just, I mean, like, in a couple of weeks, we'll be in Williamsburg again for the Virginia School Boards Conference, and what that really gives us, the ability to do, not only for our professional development, but is talk to architect and engineering firms and such in conversation about, and seed pictures and blueprints of new schools that have been built across the state and country. One of the things I remember talking to a couple of the folks there in the past is that if a division ends up in a situation where things have to be expedited, that they, I mean, if things really started moving really fast, I mean, obviously, the funding can be gotten hold of, we don't have to wait till a fiscal year to do that. We can do that within a few months. But they can take something they've already designed and just tweak a little bit of it to speed up the A and E work if we really got into a bind where we need to push that and didn't have a year to put, you know, to wait for it. RFP process, we'll have a choice there, but even if the county was pressed a little bit, could that process be sped up? Could these things be expedited, I guess, is the question, if we found ourselves in that position where we needed to get this thing rolling faster than we comfortably would like this to have it rolling?
Well, I think we would look for any possible opportunity to expedite the process if we needed to do that. Now, remember, though, this piece of land that we're working with, the building's got to be configured around that piece of land, too. And so, sometimes, that's what makes it difficult. Sure, there's a lot of plans out there, but are they going to fit that parcel of land that we're, potentially, would be looking at with this? But yes, the answer to that question is, we would be looking at those options if, when we come to that point. I guess the biggest thing right now is, and Mrs. Heywood, you really nailed it, is, you know, when do we pull that cord? When do we say, okay, now's the time? And, you know, there is a, there is a certain amount of flexibility in this because you can do the A and E work and let it sit for a year or so, okay? Assuming the dimensions of the piece of property you're working from doesn't change, code requirements don't change, and those kinds of things. But there's, you know, there's a little bit of risk in doing that. So, you know, you want to, we're trying to make sure we time this thing to where everything kind of follows in line. And it's a difficult process. Dr. James has debated this one numerous times, and we've met on it, and the best we can do is just keep our eye on what's going on in these construction sites.
How do we understand the risk, though? If we did an A and E now, and then did that move forward? If we knew the piece of property was the same, what's the risk?
Well, the biggest risk is going to be that code requirements would change, and now you have to update your A and E services completely, okay? That, now, how much of that would occur? I have no idea, if any of it would occur. That's probably your most significant risk because they're going to do the architectural and engineering services based on the code requirements at that time. And so, you know, if they change, then they're going to have to go back in and revisit all that.
Also, the worry about doing it, spending $2 million, putting it on a shelf, and then what if you never used it?
That is another concern. I mean, you don't want to throw, how's the word, how's the saying go, good money after bad? And that's another concern. You don't want to get too far ahead of this because you don't know where you're going to end up. That is the challenge of, when do we start this process? And the good news is, though, assuming everything works out the way we think it will, is that the funding for this can happen very quickly. It can really happen within a 60-90-day timeframe. It's, what happens after that, that is what's going to take the time.
Do we know when the marquee plans to build the homes in that neighborhood?
Well, that's still unknown at this point in time, but I've been ongoing conversation with the developing county staff and with division staff about that whole issue, about when is it going to start, what has to be in place to start this process moving forward.
So, we'll just have to wait and see, reevaluate the schools, McGruder and Yorktown, to see where they are with capacity based on the mobile units there, and then how many more kids come online in those areas that are building up around. Because there's no, if those mobile units fill up, there's no place else to put kids in those two schools.
Well, remember, we're doing the efficiency study, and the zone study and the bus efficiency study this spring as well, so.
And you just redesigned the instructional capacity at the schools. I was actually looking for that earlier today, and I found it in the PowerPoint presentation from the meeting back in May. Can we put that online somewhere where it's easier to find, so the public can see that? And have we shared that with the supervisors?
I believe we have, and that's been updated, correct? Dr. James?
Except for the current Except for the current FMP for this year, that's the precursor to all of this, where I've gone in and updated the instruction capacity, as well as the building capacity, because considering now, come the end of this year, Walla Mills capacity increases because the 100 wing will be available for instruction. So that's another resource we have available to us, as we look at bouncing the attendance zones and what we need to do going forward, as well as staying in constant contact with the county planner. I'll also get monthly from the county planning department any certificate of occupancy to have it been approved for new residents, as well as monitoring what's happened with the construction of those projects. As I said to you earlier, it's not unusual for me, is to sometimes visit the various developments, just to see what's happening in those, as well as staying in contact with the county planning department, see what they can tell me about permissions that have been submitted, are they moving forward, have we moved from planned to active developments? So that gives me a gauge about what we need to do with all the things that you just discussed.
I know there was a lot of discussion about different numbers that came out a year ago. I think that would be beneficial to have the 2016, 17 school year attendance numbers with the capacity, and see how we are, and have that out to the public, especially the county administrator and the supervisors.
Yes.
You know, this, we are getting ready to have an election. There's a lot of unknowns and a lot of minds of a lot of folks, builders included, so I think...
I think that's why we stopped.
Once, once that shakes out, and it's going to take a while, but once that shakes out, then I think we get a more clear picture of which way things are going.
Okay, if I can, I'd like to move you over to a debt service schedule to give you some, share some information with you on that. This is a schedule that shows all of the debt that the county owns right now for school buildings, and you'll notice it goes from fiscal year 17 all the way through fiscal year 38, and 38, of course, would be the last year, based on this particular schedule. And what's, a couple of things I think are important about this. First one is, you see the column literary loans? I could have taken that column out of this. I decided to leave it in, because that, we used to get literary loans. The school division, up until about five years ago, had a literary loan. The last one we got was the Magruder Elementary School. Now, that was like 25 years ago, something along those lines. Now, what's happened is, those literary loans are subsidized loans by the state. That's been one of the areas that's been reduced by the state over the last probably 10 to 15 years. And so, as a result of that, school divisions aren't eligible for literary loans. They're, what is out, what little bit is out there is not available to school divisions with our composite at next level. So I, I point that out only because that's just another area, in my opinion, where the state has not really kept up with their funding of public education, because this is a subsidized area where they were able to participate in the cost of construction for schools, and we no longer get that. The next column is the VPSA, that's the Virginia Public School Authority. That is the column, or that is the vehicle that is used primarily by the county government to finance schools. And the reason they use that is because it's a state-run financing pool, so you've got the full faith and credit of the, of the state working for you on that. And they typically get AAA bonds, so very good interest rates on those, and, and of course, the debt is held by the county. We don't have any GOB bonds that I'm, at least that I'm aware of at this point. We do have some QSCB, that's Qualified School Construction Bonds. That's federal bonds. There was a, there was a bond that came out about three or four years ago, where the federal government was subsidizing construction projects. We applied for that, and we did get a couple of those. All of that is rolled into this column, okay? And we don't have any notes. We used to have a VRS note, that's been paid off now. So the point of this whole chart is this, if you look at FY '17, the debt service requirement is $6,448,000. Now, if you look back two years ago, we had a huge debt on the Grafton School Complex, okay? Our debt service two years ago totaled $7.6 million. So technically, our debt service has gone down since fiscal year 15. Now, there's a caveat to that, and if you look at it, you see that $18.3 million in debt for '16 and '17 has not been issued yet. That has not been sent out on a long-term note yet by the, by the county. They haven't financed that. So that $18.3 million is going to bump this up pretty significantly when that does happen. So this is short-term relief that the debt service has gone down, but it's going to go back up as soon as those borrowings take place. And then, of course, I, what I did was, I went ahead and put the rest of the CIP over here to show what those amounts were per year. Now, if I can take you over to this chart, because it really, it really does emphasize an important piece of information. I want you to notice what happens from fiscal year 18 to 19. See that significant drop in debt service? Okay? That is when we pay off the loan, or the loan for the Tab Middle School gets paid off, okay? So that's going to free up about $1.2 million. Why is that important? That's important because that's one of the ways, hopefully, it'll, that, those funds will be used to continue to finance our CIP, assuming those funds are still available when those years come out, because that is right about the time the new elementary school is scheduled to, the first year of construction of that. So it's an item for both us and the county as we move forward with this. But then after that, you see it's pretty, pretty level, okay? Then you, then you see some other drops. And this drop here, from fiscal year '26, let's see, from '26 to '27, that's the York High School and the school board office. See, I, I track these by the project it was, and that it funded, and that'll save another $1.2 million. The point of all this is, when we talk about financing the school CIP, it's not all new dollars. A lot of this is turning over financings that have already occurred for projects, for debt service that has ended. So I think that's important. It's not all new money that we're asking for in this. Now, what's going to happen is, next year, when that $18.3 million debt is financed, then this line will go up. The total line across the board is going to rise, but the, the decline will still be there. So those, those decrements will still occur in those years. And of course, you get on down, you can see what happens ultimately, is it, it tailors out. It will never tailor out to zero, though, because new financing will occur every year. As those occur, then those debts will, will extend the, extend the line out in those next years. So any comments about, the reason I brought this forward, I just really wanted you to get a sense of how this program is financed through the, for CIP.
I just have one question, probably, I don't know if you can answer or not. For every million dollars that we have on our debt service, what, what does the county have to pay for that amount of money borrowed? Does that make sense?
Okay, in other words, if you, if we borrowed a million dollars, how much is the debt service related to that?
What's the payment on that for the next 20 years?
What's the payment on that?
So in other words, like, if we, like, right now, you said we're at six point, whatever it was, in borrowing, and if that significantly drops, and it's not reallocated, what is the...
You know, years ago, we used to reuse a rule of 10%. Interest rates have gotten really extremely low, so we don't use 10% anymore. I would estimate 7%, 8%, something like that. So 7%, 8% of a million dollars would be the annual debt. Potentially, I mean, I'm just giving you very rough numbers here, but it all depends on that interest rate, and interest rates right now are really low for borrowings. And remember, this is tax-exempt borrowing, so that's even lower than what corporations would be charging for, or paying for.
Because I guess the reason why I ask that is because, you know, as we are asking for debt to do construction or other projects, and now that thing is, you know, moving up and down, I think it's either going to be a savings if it doesn't get reallocated on the county side, or it's a, or it's going to cost more to fund the debt service. New elementary school, obviously, will cost more, because that's going to, until the 20 years is up. When the VRS dropped off, there was a savings. Grafton dropped off, there was another savings. Some of those dollars weren't reallocated back, I don't think, or, because we didn't have the debt service need, because the CIP got cut by whatever it was. So just, you know, trying to wrap my heart, arms around what that costs a year, so, to carry that kind of debt.
Okay. Yeah, again, I would, I would say roughly 7%, 8% of the, whatever principal amount you're financing. That's a rough guide, I mean, it could, it could vary. Now, the last, any further questions on the debt service? Okay, the last piece I want to talk about is just next steps for the CIP. Now, we plan on publishing the superintendent's proposed CIP this week, okay? So that will be published on the school board's website, and also have hard copies at the public libraries. And then, on the 21st of this month, you will hold a public hearing on that CIP, okay? It's an opportunity for the public to come out, provide any comments to you on any particular projects that they, they want to comment on. Then you will have another work session on December 5th to take in those public comments, and also any additional items you want to have further discussions about. And then on December 19th, you will be approving a CIP to forward over to the board of supervisors. And they then will fold that into their budget process. And their budget process will then continue on through the first part of May. So you really won't know where you stand on the CIP until they finish that, which will be around the first week of May. So we've got a long process here to go through, but we're, we're familiar with that. We've, we've done it for many years, and, but it's one that I think that we constantly have to kind of keep thinking about and advocating for. We don't want to just send it over and forget about it, because it's important that we advocate, continue to advocate with this, with both the community and the board of supervisors.
And there are no surprises for the county on this. I know you've been working with the supervisors and the chairman on that, Dr. Shandor, Dr. Jones, so preliminary indications seem to be positive, like, oh, okay, well, if you're following on the guidelines that we set, there shouldn't be a big dust kicking, at this point at least.
At this point at least.
Got a caveat.
So far, so good.
Yes.
Good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Dr. Shandor.
All right, our final item for the evening, it's been a long evening, we've had a number of presentations. Our final item for the evening, this, just wanted to have a preliminary discussion with the board related to the strategic plan. Last year, I had the opportunity to have some informal discussions with, with each of you related to our strategic plan and the development of that. We had some conversations, and board members indicated that, other than editorial corrections, the board wanted to retain the current mission, goals, and beliefs. In the strategic plan, you shared that you believe that the components are comprehensive and effective in moving the division forward, and the staff should focus on revising the objectives. So I shared this, the document that's up on the screen, I shared the document with the board last week in Friday notes. So before I move forward to talk a little bit about the draft timeline, do any of the board members have any input related to the mission, goals, and belief statements?
You know, I feel like we, I, I really like the strategic plan updates that we get pretty much every, I guess it's monthly now, isn't it, with the work sessions? And that's been, been tremendous, and we came together and, and kind of felt like the bones of, of the strategic plan was, was good. We just wanted to look at maybe doing some revision. So I feel like the, the belief statements and goals and mission are fairly, fairly reflective of how we feel on our values as a, as a division. So I feel really good about that, but I certainly...
I think when it, it became a breathing, living document, when we started that process of, if something does need to be changed, or something needs to be directed a different way, then we would do it or take care of it. So when it became something that was just living and breathing, I think, I'm good with what we have. I think when we start looking at the timeline and the resources that will bring us an idea or thought that may change our objective, you know, we may have some discussions there. But then that could literally send us back to this at some point, to tweak or change a line or a sentence or something, but we'll have to wait and see how that plays out.
I'm, I'm okay with this. My only suggestion for you all, when we have these work sessions, as Barbara always says, you've got to tell us the good, the bad, and the ugly. Don't just tell us the positive, because how are we going to know where to appropriate funds in the budget and what you need? You've got to tell us, this is working great, but we need this, so it can be even better. So don't think you've just got to come in here with sunshine. You've got to tell us, as Barbara says, the good, the bad, and the ugly, or we can't move forward.
That's good feedback.
I'm fine, yeah. Because in looking at this, from under the review of current objectives and the vision for future ideals, starting with December is when you and staff will look at, different bodies of the division will look at where we are currently.
I'm just going to pull up the screen.
Right. That's how I saw that, taking the current document that you just showed briefly, the different bodies will, on those dates, review what we have. And then, so when you say analyze and review data, that's the data that they've given feedback on?
So, yes. So that, that first piece, so if you look from 11/14 to January, that's really an opportunity for us to engage all of those stakeholders related to a lot of our objectives and our performance. So we're going to rely on our team and our groups of people to, to provide to us the good, the bad, and the ugly as well. So that's a great point that Scursky to bring up, because we want honest feedback from all of those stakeholders and constituents to drive us forward, because we, as we talked, I think during Dr. Gladew's presentation, where do we want, where do we want our graduates to be five years from now? Are there other innovations that we can bring forward? And we'll, this is a perfect springboard for that.
I guess one thing, and you just brought that up, as the state looks at how they want high schools to start to look, do we need to tweak anything in the strategic plan for that? That'll be a big issue.
Yeah, and we certainly may, and I think timing-wise, this is a good time for us to do that, because as the state Board of Education is, is moving forward with ESSA, and, and looking at where we're headed, this could go, this could actually go on to the perfect track to get us where we need to go. We'll be making some adjustments after the fact, of course, with...
And the state doesn't know where we're headed yet, right?
I, I think they have a pretty firm direction. We had a regional superintendent's meeting last weekend, and they've given us some updates along the way on where we're headed. I think there's some work to do with the standards of accreditation, I think they need to shore that up. But other than that, I think that hopefully, we're on track.
They know they need to shore that up. Are they going to shore it? So we just, it would be a perfect way of merging what, where we are with what's going on at the state level.
Dr. God, do you want to talk a little bit about the analyzing, reviewing the data and the progress update piece?
Yes, primarily what I wanted to share, as Dr. Shandor shared, from November through January, we'll be collecting information, and that will be both an activity that includes visioning, looking forward, looking, looking outward at our future ideal, and also looking at our current objectives to how do they move us toward that future ideal. Then we'll take all that data, and we'll work with principals in the principals' meeting in January, and with our executive leadership team to analyze and review that data. We'll provide a progress update to the board, one-on-one meetings in late January, and then in mid-February through Friday notes. And then we'll begin the work of developing those draft objectives. And that will occur primarily using all that information at the school board office level. But then what we'll do is take those draft objectives again and solicit feedback to our principals. We hope to use our York County Council of PTA members to solicit feedback, our assistant principals, the board. And what I want to add here, one of the pieces that's not included in here that we need to add to this timeline, in early April, we would like to post those draft objectives on the division website, and then have a public hearing at our April regular school board meeting, so that the public at large can speak to the revisions to the strategic plan. And then we would move into May, and that's when we would present the final objectives. Any changes that we made to the mission goals, whether it's just editorial in nature, or whether through the feedback that we've collected from our stakeholders drove us to make some changes, we would present those, the final strategic plan at a work session, and then the board would vote on that at the May meeting, if we continue through with this timeline, and if you guys feel comfortable with this timeline, recognizing that at any point in time, we may need to make adjustments based on the feedback that we get. You, you all may decide, based on the updates that we provide you in January, February, that, that you do want to make more intensive changes to...
More information is needed. More information is needed.
Yes, exactly right. So this is just the timeline that we wanted to work through to, so that we would have a new strategic plan ready to move into next school year.
I think the only thing I would throw out for consideration, of course, this would be further out, but as we get into that May, when, when almost you've gotten everything you want, that you're going to bring to a work session, I think, as a board member, I think I'd want to, well, I'm not going to call it a retreat, but, you know, a sit-down to be able to digest in a casual, not wearing suits and ties kind of meeting, to just have some conversation before it becomes a work session, knowing we're approving it shortly thereafter.
Sure. I agree.
But if we're not talking about a lot of change, it may not be necessary. But if there's going to be some substantial stuff brought to us, then I think that would be healthy for me because this isn't conducive.
That makes sense. And there's, and there's a lot of different points along the way of providing information, sharing information, et cetera. So after that, April 17th, getting feedback from you if there's any other additional changes before we bring it, we could certainly have two-on-one meetings or one-on-one meetings or however we want to structure those.
Because as you do your objectives, as you revise and come forward with your objectives, you're looking, in the past, you've looked at a four-year period to see increments of growth over four years. So if that's still going to be the, the same kind of thing, and I get them back at that mission statement, all students.
Right.
So how do we take where we are? And I'm going to use that reading. Remember, I was, I was so concerned about the reading because before, when it was the old reading test, we had increments of success. Then we had a new test that was like apples to oranges. So where are we with the new test? And are we making increments, significant increments each of the four years so that we're back on target?
And I would just like to make sure that you're reaching out to the parents and families and not just the YCC PTA.
You can scroll back up for one second. In the, in the upper, let me see here. Yeah, so our, our plan is, Dr. Guy, if you want to talk about those, what those, just frame what the parent community forums look like.
Well, the parent community forums, what we plan to do is, in each of our zones, plan a, a forum, a meeting. And what we'll do is ask our principals, we'll identify the groups to make sure that we have a diverse group coming to the meeting, so that we have folks coming in. It won't be the PTA. It'll be folks outside.
You're not handpicking the people, though?
No, no.
Okay, because we need to make sure everyone has the opportunity to come.
Yeah.
Okay, it made it sound like you're handpicking the group. And I wanted to make sure that was not what was happening.
But what we do want to make sure is that we don't host an event and we don't have.
Exactly.
We have just a handful of people there. So we're, we're trying to ensure that we get a good representation across the division.
Yeah, because like the special education community of families that have difficulty getting somewhere in the evening, we may have to make arrangements or do something to be able to make sure we have that, that group, that stakeholder group involved in this process. So, just as an example, so, you know, I'm glad you all are working that system where everybody will be represented at a particular, not just people that come to everything.
All righty. Thank you both for that, that update.
We appreciate your feedback. It's really good feedback, and we'll make the adjustments, and I'll send that back out in Friday notes this week.
Reminder, we will be back on Monday, November 21st for our regular board meeting. We'll see everybody there. If nobody has any further questions or comments, we are in need of a closed session. Somebody can take us in, please?
Right before the closed session.
You want to come back and go at the closed session? All right.
All right.